Adopted by the school board to allow for public comment. I know that we all discussed the budget and the budget highlights in a finance committee meeting followed by the school board meeting at which the budget was presented to the school board. So at this point, I won't allow for the public to make any comments or questions if there are any.
Does anybody have any public comment or question about the budget? Hearing none.
Okay.
That's it?
Well, we've satisfied the law. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the Plaquemines Parish School Board meeting Monday, September 9th, 2013, at 6:05 PM at South Plaquemines High School, Bures, Louisiana. We'll have a call to order. The invocation will be led by Reverend Giles and a pledge of allegiance by Mr. LaFrance.
(Inaudible)
Michael Giles.
Here.
Nancy LaHaye.
Here.
Anthony Sanfeli.
Here.
Joyce Land.
Here.
Rand Byers.
Here.
August LaBrane.
Here.
August Mann.
Here.
Josh Swallow.
Here.
William Mertz.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Item 1.04, approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we accept the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Have a motion offered by Mr. LaFrance, seconded by Ms. Lamkin. Any question? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. Ad hoc and standing committee reports. Ms. Lamkin?
Finance and Budget Committee meeting met on Thursday, September 5th, 2013, at Belchase Middle School. The meeting was called to order at 4:05 PM. Members present, Joyce Land, Chair, Paul LaMaire, Anthony Sanfeli, Joyce Land, Lamkin, August LaBrane, and Dennis Russell. Ronald White, Alberta Cousin, Paula Deffley, Mary Ellen Hamner, and Ronald Bateman. Mr. Ronald White, Director of Finance, discussed the following items. Salary schedule for social workers. Salary schedule for speech. Language pathologists, speech therapists. Salary supplements for coaches. The social workers have had their own salary schedule. Since the other members of the pupil appraisal team, educational diagnosticians, and psychologists are paid 5% over the teacher's salary scale plus the 20-day per diem, the proposal is to pay all pupil appraisal members equally. So the recommendation is to change the social worker's salary to the newly adopted teacher's salary, times 5% plus the 20 extra workdays. In the past, the speech and language pathologists have been paid 10% over the teacher's salary. The recommendation is to give 10% to the teachers. The newly hired speech-language pathologist, the same as a teacher. Neither group will receive a reduction in pay. Now, we're going to talk about the coaches for the October 7th, 2013, board meeting. The committee will recommend to the board to approve the proposed salary changes at the regular school board meeting of September 9th, 2013. There being no further comments, the meeting adjourned at 4:50 PM.
Ms. LaHaye?
The Plaquemines Parish Land and Construction, Plaquemines Parish School Board Land and Construction Committee met on Thursday, August 29th, 2013, at the Belchase School Board Office. The meeting convened and members present, Chair, Paul LaMaire, Anthony Sanfeli, Joyce Land, Lamkin, August LaBrane, and Dennis Russell. And Stephanie Calamari, Architect with Virtus Rome. Carlton LaFrance, committee member, arrived later for the meeting. Ann Riddles heads off. A long discussion ensued about what the Plaquemines Parish government recently installed in their fields. Stephanie Calamari reminded everyone to be mindful of permits with regard to flood elevation at Belchase Middle School before planning and construction. There was discussion about the new South Plaquemines High School athletic facilities. Paul LaMaire mentioned that putting the baseball field with the football field would cause the loss of parking space. He mentioned that the Roger Hoppin Field is available to be used for softball and baseball. He proposed that by using this field, more space for parking would be available at the new South Plaquemines High School facility. Mr. LaMaire recommended to go with sketch A, without the softball and baseball fields, which includes football field, rubber track, lights, bleachers, future field housing, parking. Mr. Chris Barker, HOB, gave an update on the construction projects. The new South Plaquemines High School will be ready to move in when they return from the Labor Day. Phoenix PK through 12 project is being vamped up. January 2014 will probably be the opening for the South Plaquemines Elementary School. The Port Sofa Faculty Housing Project has met with some delays due to gas lines and telephone lines. The Learning Center will get a new roof replacement and Boothville-Venus Elementary's new PA system will be installed after Thanksgiving. Mr. Barker discussed the following potential change orders. Phoenix PK through 13 construction project is a credit. South Plaquemines High School construction update IT department requests and other needed items. Belchase Primary PK through 1 construction project credit for piles. North Transportation Construction Project credits. South Plaquemines High School Bridge Project credit. The committee will recommend to the board the change orders as presented by Chris Barker. The committee is recommending that the board first use all available CDBG funds and possibly FEMA designated for the football facilities at the new South Plaquemines High School. Then revisit the remaining unfunded needs to be paid from general fund. There being no further comment, the meeting adjourned at 6:25. Mr. President, I would like to add something to the, that pertains to construction, if I may. As reported in my construction minutes, my committee has accomplished one of my goals, and that is to get the process started for support buildings that are athletic fields for Belchase Middle School and football and softball field, football and softball fields at Belchase High School. Coach Reynolds gave a great PowerPoint presentation to our committee, and Mr. Williamson discussed the needs for Belchase Middle. I have served on the construction committee for approximately 11 years when it was formed to investigate and build a multifaceted building at the primary school. I have served as Chair of this committee for approximately eight years. It is, and has always been, my belief that good, strong board committees make a very good working and better functioning board. However, the construction committee has not been as involved and effective in the last year. As Chair of that committee, I must take full responsibility, and therefore, Mr. President, I request that you replace me as Chair and member of the construction committee. I will be happy to serve on another committee if you feel I have something to contribute to a different committee. Hopefully, I've served this committee well as Chair, but now there's need to be a new Chairman. I think I've been on it long enough. I've certainly enjoyed it, but I think it's time for someone new to take charge. I think that benefits the board and the committee.
Thank you, Ms. LaHaye. Regrettably, we hate to see you go. I personally want to thank you, and I'm sure the board also wants to thank you for your years of service, dedicated service, relentless, dedicated service.
As Billy Mertz put it, hard-headed.
I was trying to be nice. But we thank you, and we understand your position.
Okay.
And, of course, we can use you on other committees. We'll take you up on that.
Okay.
Item, item two, Plaquemines Parish recognitions and/or presentations. Item 2.01, recognition of school board members for completion of the required six hours of continuing education for elected officials for 2013, including one hour in ethics.
At this time, would the school board members, please stand up with your certificates. And Ms. Mommy, would you come over here and take a picture of the school board members? At this time, I'd also like to thank Mr. Patauney for the food and for the spread that he held today for us, and getting the ceremony together with Mr. Chris Barker. And Ms. Cousin, we thank you for today's presentation, and congratulations on your completion of your hours, school board members. Thank you.
Item 2.02, PowerPoint presentation on district special education budget allocations and student population information. Paula Deffley.
Good evening, school board. Is this working? It is? Okay. Good evening, school board and Mr. Russell. As Director of Special Education, I believe it is important to keep all aspects of our daily practices transparent, especially including the IDEA budget and how that money is spent, to have the maximum positive impact on the students in our district. Having said that, I want to share with you some of the allocations we have made, given our past and current IDEA grants. This is not meant to be a detailed line item budget, but rather a general overview of where the money is allocated in several areas, and how I am committed to continue fiscal responsibility and accountability in our department. And I apologize for the screen being so small, but, so I'm gonna, if you just look at the bars, you can see this is from 2007 through 2014. And if I may, come over here. As you can see, from, this is fiscal year 2014, right here. As you can see, we had a major dip in our funding for this year. So here are the IDEA totals granted by the state over the last eight years, from 2007 to 2014. As you can see, our grant amount this year is significantly less than last year, at 755,000. But I have made what I believe are fiscally sound decisions in working with the decrease. The amount awarded by the state through the feds have nothing to do with the MFP, and it is not related at all to the number of students in our district. I believe, as many other directors in the state do as well, that the sequestration from earlier this year plays a part in the decrease, as our decrease is consistent with I have two priorities when looking at the budget. The first priority is getting the teachers and students what they need for successful academic and behavioral achievement. As you can see, despite the budget cut this year, the percent allocated for classroom materials and supplies has increased, which you actually can't see. Because this last year, because of our, with our larger budget last year, we had 8%. As, we went from 3% in 2007, and I have increased in the budget for materials for classroom supplies to 9% of the budget at $61,000. Last year, we spent $83,978, ensuring that we had the proper instructional and support materials in all of our special education classrooms, and this year, we have increased that to 9%. Last year was 8%, increased it to 9% this year. We have also set up an inventory process that allows us to keep track of all the instructional materials and equipment purchased by IDEA funds. Now we move on to salaries. The second priority that I have is to allocate at least 70% of the IDEA budget to salaries from this year forward. If you look back in the past, 2007, 54%, 2008, 61%, 2009, 56%, and so forth. 2013, last year, we allocated 56% of the IDEA budget to salaries. This year, we bumped it up, despite the budget decrease, to 71% of our IDEA budget goes towards salaries for personnel in our school district. It is important for the district to see that we are contributing what I believe to be our fair share in providing quality educators and support personnel for our students. With cuts being made in a variety of grants from the feds and the state, we need to come together to support each other in whatever way we can. I'm going to send this to all of you, this, this presentation to you, so you can look at all the details. This slide represents what we spend at administrative supplies. This money that we talk about here, that I talk about here, represents the cost to run our office at WCO, at the Woodland Central Office. Back in 2007, 10% of the budget was spent, almost $100,000, to run the special ed office. I have narrowed it down to 1.7% of our budget is spent on the WCO office for special education. The money that we spend goes toward office supplies, training materials, and contributions toward building consumables, such as copy paper and items needed for general education and special education trainings held at WCO. Now we move to travel and mileage. If we look at this, in 2011, 110,000, 13% of the budget was spent on travel and mileage. And when I say travel and mileage, I mean service providers within our district, which I'll talk about in just a minute, as well as professional development travel outside of the district. We're down to 5% of our budget on that, which is still, it's still a substantial amount at $46,000. That's plenty to do what we need to do to provide services for our students in the district. However, given that, providing special education service is, services is expensive, no matter what school district you are in. Plaquemines Parish geography creates additional costs because of service providers having to travel many miles, one or two times a week, to provide services for students. Mr. Russell and I have studied the in-district travel of each service provider, as well as pupil appraisal members, and these are the people I'm talking about. Speech, adapted physical education, physical therapy, occupational therapy, social workers, school psychologists, educational diagnosticians, and coordinators. All those people travel within our district. And Mr. Russell and I have maximized their services, provide, that they provide to the children, while cutting mileage costs significantly over the last two years. One way in which we decreased mileage reimbursements was by purchasing pool cars, which we purchased out of Medicaid funds. So we purchased pool cars so that pupil appraisal team at WCO can sign up cars for travel. They also carpool using those cars. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? Would you go back to that last one? Thank you. The one thing I also wanted to mention was that we have also eliminated excessive travel to professional developments throughout the state. While we do still attend necessary professional development trainings, we only attend those that will have the maximum impact on instructional and behavioral outcomes for our students. So when we travel, it's because it is something that will benefit our students. Now we move on to Medicaid funding. These people historically are able to bill for Medicaid. Speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists. When a parent goes to their initial IEP meeting with a student, when a student goes into special education, we have a Medicaid form that the state has, and we say, would you please sign this so we can bill Medicaid? It does not affect your personal finances with Medicaid. It doesn't affect their, their money that they get from Medicaid. The parents sign it, and we get money as we are able to bill. Now, in the last year, the state has said that school psychologists and social workers can also begin to bill for Medicaid money, for services that they have. So when, historically, these three groups, these three sets of professionals have generated an average of $110,000 each academic year. So just by billing Medicaid and getting the parents to sign that paperwork, we have brought in $110,000 a year. That amount will increase in the future, as we are now able to bill for school psychologists and social works, social worker services. Back in 2012, 41%, this goes up to 120,000, which is, I'm sorry, 110,000, which is our average for the last three years that we've brought in. Back in 2012, 41% of our Medicaid money that we got back came, went to salaries. Last year, I increased that to 81% at $90,000, and this year, we have committed 88% of the, 88% of the money that comes back into our district from Medicaid, we have dedicated that to salaries, for a total of $97,000. With the additional 13,000, roughly, we buy equipment for those students with significant disabilities. But we also have all of the classroom materials and supplies money where we can, we can buy anything that we need to buy for our students. In closing, I hope that this information has helped to clarify the special education department's commitment to contributing to the greater good of our school district. I believe that our close working relationship with all other departments has maximized not only the impact of our district IDEA funds, but the academic success of all of Are there any questions? I know that you really couldn't see the numbers, and I, once again, I apologize for that. You will receive the PowerPoint tomorrow morning, and so if you have any questions, feel free to call me. But any questions right now? Okay.
I just have one question. When qualifying for the Medicaid, those, those parents, they have to be financially able to qualify for that, or everybody can?
No, ma'am. It has to be, it has to be students who are already on Medicaid, in the Medicaid service.
Okay. So you still have a lot that aren't, so it...
Correct. Yes, ma'am. Students who have private insurance, we do not receive any reimbursements from the state for them.
So you can't bill the private insurance?
No, ma'am. We can't. Not at this time.
Okay.
Now, our pupil appraisal coordinator, Mary Ellen Hamner, and I will briefly share information about our department and our special education students' testing results as compared to the state. Okay. Thank you. And again, I apologize. Also, I'll send you a copy of my PowerPoint, also tomorrow, so you can see the numbers. This is our, excuse me, this is our department flow chart. Pardon me. Once again, you'll get this, to show where each and every person in our department flows within the, within the department, within the organization.
My job as a pupil appraisal coordinator is to coordinate the activities and oversee psychologists, social workers, and ed diagnosticians in the district. I'm also the compliance reviewer. I review for federal and state law to make sure everything we do is compliant with law. What I wanted to point out is, we have two teams. The South team services South Plaque High Elementary, Boothville, the Learning Center in Phoenix. The North team services Belchase High Primary and Middle School. Each team's composed of a social worker, a psychologist, and an ed diagnostician. And what's different now is in the old days, when I was an ed diagnostician, you know, we'd go in and we'd test for special ed, and that's it. I mean, we were very, very isolated. The model is completely different now. The majority of the work that these folks do will be with the general ed population through interventions, and with the special ed population. So it's a very different look than it was, you know, 15 years ago. And what I'd like to do now is to share the results of the special ed testing data as compared, in our district, as compared to the students in the state of Louisiana. And you'll be very, very proud to see that the kids here are definitely holding their own, in all grades. Thank you.
And since you can't see it very clearly, for all of these, blue is, we are in blue.
Right.
So look at the blue line, compared to the green.
We're the river, we're blue. And I know you can't read it. Again, this is from 2005 all the way to 2012. Students taking the leap, English Language Arts in the fourth grade. And if you notice, the blue line is Plaquemines Parish, the green line is the state. And even if you can't see the numbers, you can see that we're leaps, and, you know, almost double what the state average is in ELA fourth grade. Thank you. The next graph represents special education students taking the fourth grade math portion of the leap from 2005 to 2012. And again, you know, starting back even in 2007, we're leaps and bounds above the state These are, now we're switching to eighth grade. These are students in special education, eighth graders, taking the ELA portion of the leap. And you can see here, you know, we were even, and someone sometimes below that of the state. And I think, you know, the difference for me as an ex-classroom teacher, is we're now working hand-in-hand with general ed. You know, even at the WCO, we're in the same building with the general ed administrators, which is different. And we're also getting a lot of PD that's effective, meaning the administrators, the principals, they know what the teachers are lacking, and what the kids are lacking, and they go in, and that's what they focus on. And I think, you know, I don't know for sure, but I feel like that's a result of their hard work, and it's the teachers in, in our district, showing that we've made vast improvements here, and hopefully will continue in eighth grade. The next slide represents special education students taking the eighth grade portion of the math leap. And math, wow. I mean, you can see the blue line, even if you can't read the numbers. You know, I've always thought we focused a lot on reading, so when I saw this, I was surprised. I said, my gosh, we're doing so well in special education and math. And remember, these are just the special education students. Okay? Thank you. Less is best in this slide. The state collects data all the time. They want to know how many kids are suspended, how many children are sent home in suspension, how many kids are in school suspension. And so in this case, we want our line to be less, in which it is. This is reflecting that, if you notice, the blue line is starting to get lower, and I believe that's because we, as a district, are now addressing behavior problems through intervention, principals, teachers, administrators, you know, we want to keep kids in school. You know, we want to keep kids in school. It doesn't serve a purpose to send a child home for a day, or three days. So I feel like we're really on the right track as far as behavior interventions go in our district because we're definitely using out-of-school less. Percentage of students with disabilities. I know it's hard to see, but the state average, we're even with the state as far as the, I hate to say recommended, but the appropriate number of students in special ed. The state has an idea of what they'd like to see so you're not over-identifying students. And we're pretty, we're always within what the state expects us to do for the size of our district, if that makes sense for you. Mr. Rusell will appreciate this graph. I know you can't see the numbers, but I'll send it to you. We have students who come into our district who are already special ed students. And I always say that we must put a sign out saying we have a really great special ed program. So what I did on this graph is to look at how many students, the blue line, that we identify as special ed students. The little green section, which is about 27 percent, come into our district already in special education. And that's significant to me. When you know, when you're looking at 9 and 10 percent numbers, when you look at 27 percent of the students move here are already special education students. No, I can't, it's hard to read that. It's harder for the, I'm sorry. I just, I didn't want, I'm sorry. I didn't read the numbers to you. I'll send you the PowerPoint. Compliance, that's what I do for a living. The state does not take less than 100 percent. You cannot be less than 100 percent compliant on timelines or you get in a corrective action plan. And we're the blue line, and we've been 100 percent except in 2007. And the reason we weren't 100 percent, the person's gone. But other than that, you know, we pride ourselves on being at the top. And the state expects nothing less. They didn't leave on their own, no. Again, this pie is hard to see, but the gist of it is these are all the exceptionalities in the special education bulletin 1508. And the biggest chunk of the pie are students with learning disabilities in like reading and math. And the other large portion of the pie are students with language impairments. And we're perfect because that is what the majority of the nation, most students fall into special ed because they have a reading disability or language. So we're pretty average there. And do you guys have any questions? Well, thank you very much, and I also will send that to you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamner and Mr. Pollan.
And just to let you know, we plan on doing this every September just to keep you updated with our budget allocations. And of course, you're, feel free to contact me at any time for that information.
Thank you, Ms. Duffley. Item 2.03 has been deferred. Item 2.04, recognition of excellence in financing reporting awards awarded to the Plackman's Parish School Board by the Government Finance Officers Association and the Association of School Business Officials. Ron White.
Hi, good evening again. I plan to do this every September as well. Our comprehensive annual financial report for this past year, not for this past year, for 2012, the latest one that's been completed, earned two awards from the two organizations that Mr. St. Philip mentioned. This one and from the Government Finance Officers Association as well as the Association of School Business Officials. It's the second year in a row that we've won these awards. They are based on the financial report meeting very high standards of accountability and transparency as well as the mundane aspects of accuracy and format and that sort of thing. And so we're very happy that we were able to receive the award. And like I said, we plan to do this every year.
Thank you, Mr. White. Congratulations.
Mr. White, why don't you take a picture with Ms. Melanie and Ms. Mommy? Why don't you come and take a picture, Mr. White?
I would like to thank Sharon and Melanie for their hard work and our whole finance department.
Sharon, come and take a picture with me.
Well, I'm prepping up and everything over there.
Okay, item three, board members' time for non-agenda and agenda items. First of all, I wanted to thank everybody for coming out and taking part of this first official meeting at South Plackman's High School. I want to thank Mr. Bartholomew for his hospitality and thank the cafeteria ladies for putting on such a fine spread. It was really, really nice. We had the opportunity to enjoy a ribbon-cutting ceremony today at 5:00, celebrating opening up the doors of this new school, very, very long in the making. It's been eight years since Hurricane Katrina took our schools and left our students with temporary schools to go to school. And they were troopers. They held on and they did what they had to do. And as a board, we did what we had to do. Relentless hours, relentless committee meetings. We finally came up with designs and went through and finally came through and had a project that was completed. And this is our first high school that we're able to, able to call completed. The children, the residents, everybody needed someplace to call home. And if I can borrow a phrase from a popular TV show, TV show on ABC, "Welcome home, South Plackmans. Welcome home." Anybody else? Item 3.01, discussion in appropriate and the architect to proceed with the design and construction of athletic field elements for South Plack High School project. Mr. Lemire.
I'd like to offer this using the sketch A that we went over with the construction committee and also say that this is just a start. That we'd also like you to work on the plans for the field house and all that other stuff. It will be funded separately.
I'll second this.
A motion offered by Mr. Lemire, seconded by Mr. Mertz. Any question? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously. Superintendent comments and report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Discussion and appropriate action in regard to adopting the property tax millages to be levied for the 2013. Mr. White.
So offered for discussion?
I'll second.
Motion offered by Mr. Lemire, seconded by Mr. Mertz.
You're getting good.
Don't say anything too soon. Included in the board packet is a proposed resolution to renew our property tax millages at the same amount. Fortunately, this year, I didn't have to do any extra work like I've had to do the last couple of years with the whole roll forward process. And so I'd like to offer this to, for approval by the board.
Any questions?
Mr. White, does this resolution need to be read in in entirety?
No, it does not.
It does not?
It just needs to be in writing when I present it to the legislative auditor's office.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Lemire.
Can you second it?
Mr. Mertz. Any question? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Discussion and appropriate action in regard to adopting a budget for the general fund and all special revenue funds for the year ending June 30, 2014.
So offered?
Motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Ms. Lampkin.
The budget for this year consists of a reduction in revenues as well as an increase in expenditures. Over last year, excuse me, but still shows a small surplus in the neighborhood, I believe, of about $300,000 for the general fund. Hopefully, we'll be able to keep the expenditures rather low and the revenues will turn out to be higher than expected. But it's a conservative budget, and I would ask that the board adopt this budget.
Any question? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Discussion and appropriate action in regard to approval of a salary schedule for social workers, Mr. White.
So offered?
Motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Ms. Martinez.
The social workers were previously on a separate salary schedule from the teachers. And in fact, it was a salary schedule that resulted in the social workers being paid more than the teachers. And in the finance committee meeting, we had members of the special ed department who, there they are, that they expressed to us the desire to have the social workers, the educational diagnosticians, and the psychologists all pay the same because basically the level of responsibility is the same for the, for all three. And so when we looked at the current social workers, we found that because the teachers got a pay raise, that we could put them on the same salary schedule as the teachers. And just like the other two positions be paid 20 extra days and 5 percent over a teacher, they would still see a small increase in their pay for this year as well as larger pay increases over the coming years because of the teacher pay raise that goes into effect this year. So instead of having a separate schedule, I'm proposing that we just put them on the same formula as those other two special ed positions, which will actually end up saving the district money over having a separate social worker salary schedule.
Any questions? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Discussion and appropriate action in regard to approval of salary schedule for the speech therapist.
So offered?
Motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Ms. Lahey.
There was a desire by the administration to remove what had been a supplement to the speech-language pathologists or the speech therapists at a time when there was a critical need for those, those people. What we'd like to do is remove the 10 percent supplement that these people were making over their, over a teacher's pay. But at the same time, we don't want to affect the people who are currently receiving this supplement. So our proposal is to, for people who newly hired people as they come into the system, not pay that supplement. But at the same time, we don't want to take away something from people that have already been getting it. So what we're going to do is have just one schedule. Instead of having two different schedules, have one salary schedule for this position. But we would move the people who are currently employed in that position up on the schedule to a step that would equate to the 10 percent supplement. And in that way, they can continue on the same schedule as the newly hired people. But there won't be any problem with any future people being hired being on a separate schedule from the ones that are currently in that position.
Any questions?
Mr. White, when you say up a step, do you mean in years or what do you mean?
Correct.
But that doesn't affect retirement years?
No, it does not. No, it does not. In fact, that question was asked, it's a separate, the step is basically the line on the salary schedule. It equates to years, it equates to years to service only for the purpose of calculating salary. But in nowhere, no other way does it equate to any kind of seniority, any kind of service for retirement purposes or anything like that. All of that is totally separate. It's only for the calculation of salary.
Any other questions? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. 4.06 is deferred. 4.07, discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of a change.
Mr. Rusell.
Oh, I'm sorry. 4.05, discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of a change order for Phoenix pre-K12 construction project. Mr. Barker.
So offered for discussion?
Second.
Motion offered by Mr. Lemire, seconded by Ms. Lahey and, I couldn't, Mr. Mertz.
Lahey.
This is a change order for some adjustments in the construction contract. Some of it's additional stuff, some of it's deductive stuff. The total of the change order is $11,837.
Any questions? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, defer 4.06, 4.07. Discussion and appropriate action in regard to approval of a change order for the Bell Chase Primary Construction Project. Mr. Barker.
So offered?
Motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Ms. Martinez.
This is a, what we're asking you to do here, we don't have a change order in your packet. This is a change order that will be a credit in excess of $100,000 on the Bell Chase Primary pre-K1 facility. It's because the pile load testing came back and it showed that we could install less piling structure than had originally been designed by the engineers. I don't have, we have not worked out the final price with the contractor. And there is a time element that affects the total dollar, the total value of the change. So what I'm asking you to do is approve a credit of $100,000 plus on the Bell Chase Primary. And we'll, we'll tell you what the final credit was at the end of the day when we write it. But I did assume that you would pass a credit. But we need to, once, once we arrive with the final number with the contractor, because there is a time element involved in it, we need to write it and process the change immediately rather than waiting to have another board meeting or calling you all in.
Does the first and second agree with the open-ended change on a deduct? Any other questions? Then the motion?
What we'll do is we'll issue a, we're issuing a construction change directive for the contractor to proceed so we can, we can avoid the time element.
Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Discussion and appropriate action in regard to the deductive value engineering change for the North Transportation Facility, Mr. Barker.
So offered?
Motion offered by Ms. Mertz and a quick second by Mr. Swallow.
We gave you a copy of the change order in your packet. Since the construction committee, we've had a little bit of adjustment that was needed to that change order. And as it turns out, one item had to come off the change order, one item had to go on the change order. And it ends up being that you're getting, instead of $36,000 in credit, you're getting $38,471 in credit. So it's an increase in the deductive change. So you get $2,000 more that you can spend someplace else.
Any questions? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Discussion and appropriate action in regard to approval of a change order for liquidated damages on the South Plack High School Bridge project. Big old bridge out there.
So offered? Second.
Motion offered by Mr. Lemire, seconded by Mr. Mertz.
The bridge out front was delayed in being completed by the contractor. They didn't finish their punch list on time. And as such, the contract says that every day that they don't finish the work, they owe us money. That money is to cover the school board's additional costs that they have associated with not having that bridge in place. In this instance, the liquidated damages for this project were $9,750 that you can now take and spend someplace else. So it's a credit back to you.
I like these change orders. Any questions? Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously.
I'm all out.
Good. Keep them going.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Discussion and appropriate action in regard to approval of revisions to the PPSB Department of Transportation School Bus Driver Attendant Handbook. of Transportation School Bus Driver Attendant Handbook for 2013, 2014.
So offered. Second.
Motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Mr. Lemire.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is basically containing the same information the last handbook had, with only changes to Plackman's Parish School Board policies. It is a little more comprehensive, as you can see. It's a little thicker than it has been in the past. I've added some information, general knowledge information from the State Transportation School Bus Driver Training packets and training material that we do. Anything that's referenced to policy or has to do with policies referencing here to the Plackman's Parish School Board Policy Manual, and we do have like the important policies, dress code, attendance, leave of absences, harassment, those type of things are all in the appendixes.
All right. Have you...me, too. Have you heard?
On the changes. Any questions? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Discussion and appropriate action in regard to approval of the intricacy agreement between Head Start and the Special Education Department. Ms. Mommy.
So offered. Second.
Nothing has changed from last year, except the signature...
Have a motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Mr. Swallow.
Nothing has changed from last year, except the signature and the date. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Long speeches as usual. Thank you, Ms. Mommy. Any questions? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Monthly Head Start Budget Report. Ms. Mommy.
The budget is included in your packet, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about it.
Well, I actually like the way you present where you have the budget and...
You can thank Melanie for that. It's her spreadsheet.
Oh, I love it. I love it. The way you have the way you've got this is how much you need to...
Thank you, Ms. Mommy. Approve the board cosign agenda.
Any questions?
Motion. So offered.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so offered. There we go.
Second.
Have a motion offered by Mr. Swallow, seconded by Mr. Mertz. Any questions? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. Information items. Does anybody have any information items?
School Board and Mr. Roussel, I would like to clarify, when Ms. Hamner and I were referring to the individual who was no longer with us because of compliance issues, that was a former school psychologist on our pupil appraisal team. So I wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
No need.
Any other citizens' comments?
I would also like to thank Pamela Lawson, all the work that she's put in to get this furniture down here. She's been coming down here, working hard, along with Ms. Kuson and others.
Thank you, Mr. Roussel. Item 8, date and time, location of the next meeting, October 7, 2013, at Bell Chase High School at 6:00 PM. Item 9, adjournment.
So offered.
Second.
Motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Ms. Lampkin. Any question? Any oppose? Motion passes.